Yes.
Commissioner, there were two matters that I wish to raise, but also Malina Friend wants to raise a matter too.
Yes.
Let him go first.
I'm grateful to Malina Friend. Commissioner, we produced two documents over the luncheon adjournment, one being a records management standard from 2023 and the other being an information and communication technology policy from 2019. Could we just say this, it was a reference to an earlier summons. There, on my instructions, there was no summons that requested these documents. The 2015 document that was adverted to was produced because it was attached to another document which was responsive to the summons you issued earlier, Commissioner. Nothing really turns on that. I just wouldn't want a suggestion that these documents were responsive to an earlier summons and should have been produced earlier, but they're here.
I understand the point, I'm not too troubled about that. If we have the, and just so I'm clear, the documents that have been produced, I think I described them as a records management policy, they are the documents that, whether I've described it correctly or otherwise, that comprise the relevant policy for those purposes?
Those are my instructions.
Thank you very much. I'm most grateful.
Commissioner, I haven't had a chance to look at those.
Yes.
On the basis that Ms Myers has given evidence of her understanding of what she had to comply with and how she complied with those.
Yeah.
I won't take her to those documents if an issue arises about their application, I can pursue that with other witnesses.
Yes, that's understood.
May I raise two matters?
Yes.
The first matter is, before the luncheon break, I asked some questions which arose from defamation proceedings brought by Mr Manoon.
Yes.
Against Mr Ruskeski, and for part of that, we went into a private session.
Yes.
Can I indicate that it is council assisting view that the relevance of the evidence that was adduced goes to matters of council and councils' policies and operation of work, health and safety issues and hazard reports? Other matters dealing, if I can describe them, with substance of the defamation proceedings as indicated by the questioning, by the questions we're not interested in and we would also be making a submission, it's not ultimately relevant to your consideration of the terms of reference.
Thank you.
The second matter is, I want to turn to some final questions about Ms Bustani. The questions about Ms Bustani, though I do accept there was a text message put up which referred to the way that she dealt with other staff, but the concentration on the issue of the senior advisor position is more what was the position, how it was filled, who did it answer to, how did it operate in practice? Although obviously Mr Mallard occupied the position and then Ms Bustani has subsequently offered the, occupied the position, we do not anticipate that the inquiry will be examining Ms Bustani's actual work or, how can I put this, how, any questions about her, the adequacy of how she's performed in that role? It is more, as I said, why was the role created? How did it fit in? How did it deal within the organisational structure?
Processes, policy structures, as opposed to performance by any individual occupying that role.
Yes.
Understood, thank you.
Now, Ms Myers, in respect of Ms Bustani, you can excuse me for a minute. We've given, we've heard evidence that there was the first stage of the restructure of the coun, of the council, which included two directors being made redundant, and that led to your position as an executive assistant being made redundant.
Yes.
In addition, in June 2025, following a fire drill or a fire evacuation, did you have a discussion with Ms Bustani?
Yes.
This was when you'd all evacuated the building and were waiting to go back in?
Yes.
What, did Ms Bustani raise with you an issue about uncertainty in respect of her employment?
Yes.
What did she say?
She, we started the conversation, she asked me if I would be staying at council and I told her that I would be leaving on the 1st of July. She raised concerns that she was uncertain and unclear on who she would report to from the 2nd of July, which was the official date. Shane and I both finished on the 1st of July and she had concerns that she was unclear on her reporting line from the 2nd of July.
After that discussion with her, did you exchange some messages?
Yes.
Would document INQ dot zero five zero dot zero zero one dot zero zero one two be brought up and it can be live straight? Now, this commences with a message that you've sent, Ms Bustani?
Yes.
You're checking in and you ask any progress or clarity reached on your employment situation? HR advised me conversations were reaching a conclusion. I pressed them last week on looking after you after our chat during the fire drill and lack of communication on reporting line. And then if we move to the bottom of this page, there's a message from Ms Bustani, she thanks you, and then I was formally made an offer today which would apply from 2 July. It's a big pay cut unfortunately, but still considering it. Thanks for all your help, et cetera. And if we go to the next page, she's going to see you at the drinks next Friday. Was that some kind of farewell?
Yes.
For you and Mr Mallard?
Yes.
And then you send an email, glad you've gotten the offer, so you've got something to consider instead of radio silence, make whatever decision is best for you. Now, your farewell drinks, did Ms Bustani arrive at the drinks?
Yes.
At the drinks, did she inform you whether she had took up this alternative offer?
Yes.
And did she tell you what the alternative job was?
No.
Did she say to you, sorry, I'll start again, the issue that you discussed during the fire drill was, well, under the organisational chart at the moment, I report to Mr Mallard. If he's been made redundant, who am I reporting to? Did she say whether that had been resolved?
No, that's what she was, do you mean in the verbal conversation?
I'm not being clear, I apologise. That was the issue she raised. When you saw her at drinks on that Friday and she said that she'd taken the offer, did she say to you who she was reporting to?
No.
And you didn't get details about what the job was or?
No.
And is it your understanding that Ms Bustani is still working at the council?
Yes.
Excuse me for a minute. I'd asked you, I'd asked you about the communications that we've seen through text messaging and whether those messages were then recorded or downloaded, or whatever the term is, into the council management sys, document management system. I also asked you about use of WhatsApp, and my recollection is this morning, I also asked you about whether the mayor used WhatsApp at times.
Yes.
Did he?
Yes.
To your observation, did he use it often?
I couldn't comment on the frequency, but I know that it was used to communicate with the council as a whole, with certain groups of councillors, sometimes the CEO and possibly other executives.
And to you, your knowledge, were any of those WhatsApp communications in some way downloaded or a permanent record kept of them?
No.
Did you ever have a discussion with the mayor about his use of the WhatsApp method of communicating?
Yes.
Roughly, when did that occur?
In 2022, I can't recall the month.
What did you say to him?
I had prepared a memo to inform the full council of the progress of the CEO recruitment. And when I finished preparing it, the mayor came to the office late in the afternoon and I presented it to him and he gave it back to me and said, I'm not doing this, I'm not interested in sending this. And I asked why and said it was a formal record and it was good practice to inform the rest of the council outside of the panel what was happening with the process to avoid them asking questions on the floor of council. And the mayor said, if I want them to know something, I'll tell them on the WhatsApp group.
Did you raise with him anything further about use of the WhatsApp group?
That I felt that, for that particular communication and what the matter was, that it needed to be more formal than that and that sending a message on a WhatsApp group was not a formal, appropriate way of informing the elected body.
And as you've said, that the particular subject matter was the recruitment of the new CEO?
Yeah, so the, how the process was going, where the panel was at, at that point in time with the process.
When you raised with him your view of the appropriateness of a more permanent record that then could be trimmed or whatever, did he respond?
Only that he didn't want to do it and that he felt sending the message in WhatsApp was his preferred method. I don't recall if it was that same interaction or previous interactions when we had discussed informing the council as a whole, that the mayor's view was that there was a makeup on the recruitment panel of councillors, that you had an independent, a Labour councillor and two Liberal councillors, that it was their responsibility to update their party counterparts on the council on how the prog, the process was travelling.
Sorry, so by that time, the committee or the panel had been established?
Yes.
So, and as you outlined, one independent, one Labour and two Liberals?
From memory, I think that was the makeup.
And the view was that if there were questions, information about or questions concerning the recruitment of the CEO process, that could, those inquiries could be made of, for example, if it was a Labour councillor, the Labour councillor representative on the panel?
Yes.
And not, in a sense, emanate from him?
Yes.
Excuse me for a minute. I want to ask you to begin with, at a general level, when you were working as the executive assistant to the mayor, but also when you became the executive assistant initially to the director of City Futures, did you have any observation of the, Mr Manoon wanting to become involved in operational matters?
From time to time, yes.
How did you become aware of that?
Either through verbal conversations with the mayor or possibly through the forwarding of requests or complaints that he had received from the community and the instruction that was provided, or emails that I could see coming into his inbox or meeting invitations that I felt were inappropriate.
If there was some kind of entry into the diary or an invitation that you did not think was appropriate, what would you do in those circumstances?
I would decline it and remove it from the mayor's diary and then want to have a discussion with him about why I had removed it. That was not always possible in a timely manner, but if it was inappropriate, I would decline it once, as soon as it was received.
When you refer to invitations to, what, attended meetings?
Yes.
That, are those invitations being made internally?
Yes.
Was there an incident in about April 2023 when there had been some kind of invitation to attend some kind of meeting which dealt with operations made by Mr Breton?
Yes.
And at that point, Mr Breton wasn't the acting CEO, but was either the director of operations or the acting director of operations? And when the invitation was made, can you just assist me? If an invitation is made, does it automatically go into the diary?
It will show as a tentative entry.
Which usually can require somebody to, to confirm?
Yes.
And your intervention to decline it, that was after the invitation was made and you saw it, in a sense, sitting there in the diary?
Yes.
Why did you form, do you recall what it was about and why you formed the view that it was inappropriate?
There were a few reasons, the content of the meeting, I felt was too operational. I can't, it was something possibly to do with contributions, but I can't be specific on.
Developer contributions, there's seven point one one?
Possibly. I looked at what other staff had been invited into the meeting and what they would be discussing and I didn't feel it was appropriate for the mayor to attend. Normally, by declining it, a normal process, I would think, is that the directors who attend, if there were any attending that meeting, would then brief the mayor separately as to not have the mayor in the room for what would be an operational discussion with other staff or for whoever organised the meeting to speak with the CEO first to relay if the mayor had intentions of what he was wanting to get out of the meeting, if there was a different way of managing it so that the mayor could still receive the information that he was seeking, but the staff would still be separated and comfortable to discuss operational matters without elected officials present.
That outline that you've given is, when you were the executive assistant to the previous mayor, was that the way the matters proceeded?
Usually the former mayor would go direct to the CEO. On some occasions, she would go straight to the director, but most often it was through the CEO when information was requested or through me to the CEO.
Would you bring up document INQ dot zero two three dot zero zero one dot zero 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 four? Yes, please. This is an exchange between you and Mr Manoon on 18th of April 2023.
Yes.
Mr Manoon sends you a message, why did you pull me out of that localisation discussion with Jason?
Yes.
And you responded, we can just move down a little bit, that's fine, because of the content and that is linked with your evidence of if it was inappropriate, that is, it was really an operational matter?
Yes.
And then you say, talk to John if you want to attend, that is what Jason should have done, John's John Ajaka?
Yes.
So you're suggesting there, part of the procedure you just outlined, that the CEO should be involved if there's some issue that the mayor either wants to know about or a member of staff wants to involve the mayor about?
Yes, not perhaps in every instance, but if it was specific information, it's so that it can be checked, is it appropriate that the mayor and/or a councillor have that information? Should they be privy to part of it, but not all of it? It depended on what their objective was for wanting the information.
Your evidence that you gave, which was along the lines of, well, look, depending on the circumstances, you know, the CEO should become involved or there can be a briefing paper after the staff meet back to the mayor to answer any issues that the mayor may have. I know we're kind of seeing obsessed by procedures and policies, but was that set out anywhere?
On most occasions, you would follow the interaction with staff policy, but it would happen sometimes, it may not necessarily be the mayor, but if a councillor requested certain information, it also needed not only be checked against the policy, but also if one was asking for it, then, and it was, should all of them be given the same information? So it would depend on the context of which it was being requested.
That issue about if one consulate councillor, councillor requested information and the issue about, well, if that councillor gets it, everybody should get it, was that a matter that the CEO would turn his or her mind to?
Yes, sometimes it may be raised by a member of the executive, it may be a very valid point that someone's raised where they pick up, well, we haven't briefed the council on this matter, perhaps it would be appropriate to do so at this point in time because one of them has raised it, is it the right time to provide all of them with the information and/or a briefing?
I want to move to another topic, dealing with information that is available within council, but maybe only to certain people or into certain circumstances, and whether at times either the mayor or councillors obtained that information and disclosed it. Can I first ask you about matters of salary? So we've heard evidence about putting to one side the directors, the managers and then staff working in the particular directorates, they would have an award classification, that's linked to the salary system or the salary scheme at the council, but at times, some people, because of their particular role, could be paid at a market rate?
Yes.
And was it the position that within council, if you occupied the position of a planner within the planning section, what salary you actually received was confidential to you?
Yes.
It wasn't something that, unless the person wanted to tell other people, that other members of staff would necessarily know or had a right to know, sorry?
Can you please re-ask the question?
My example of the planner who's getting a certain salary, that fact was private to the plan? Didn't have a right to know what that planner was earning?
No.
Excuse me. And also, was it your understanding that you could obtain from somebody with authority within human resources of a list of full-time employees, their positions and their salary?
Yes, but it would be restricted to a very small number of people.
Do you recall in May 2023, circumstances in which Mr Manoon obtained a copy, if I describe it as the FTE detailed report?
Yes, but I believe it was received in April.
Okay. Can you assist us in the circumstances of April when he rece, how he received it?
He requested that I ask for it over the phone and not via email. And I made a phone call to another PA in the corporate services section and explained what was requested. Then I went about my duties and went out to lunch and when I came back from lunch, the hard copy list was face down on my chair. And a short while later, I had a call from the CFO or I may have had a missed call which I returned and he asked, did I get what was left on my chair for my boss? I said that I had the document and he told me that it was very important that no one knew that the. Told me that it was very important that no one knew that the mayor had it.
Um, and after that phone call, did you provide the list to the mayor?
Yes.
Um. Subsequently, was there a a text message exchanged with the mayor in which the list was raised?
Yes.
Would document I N Q dot zero two three dot zero zero one dot zero 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 five be brought up, please? And that can be live streamed. You can see the date if we can, a- and there seems to be a message from the mayor, something about. The minister can speak if he attends and make sure it's in John's diary.
Yes, that's something irrelevant.
Uh, sorry, irrelevant to the questions I'm going to ask you.
Right.
If we proceed down, you go a yep. And then also, can you let Shane have a look at the list of positions in council? Don't let him keep it, he's meeting with Farooq tomorrow.
Yes.
Um, the reference to the list of positions is that the list of that I've described as the F T E detailed report?
Yes.
Um. You gave evidence of obtaining it, the conversation with, I think you said the C F O?
Yes.
Uh, and that you took it into the mayor. After doing that, um, and until you received this text message, do you know what happened to it?
Sometimes it stayed in the mayor's office, other times it was given back to me to keep safe. And to make sure that no one knew that we had it.
When you got this message of letting Shane have a look, that's Shane Mallard?
Yes.
Did you give him a ring or contact him?
He's, he was in the senior advisor position.
Oh, so he's in the vicinity.
Yeah. Leave it back.
Um, ultimately, do you know what happened with the list?
I kept the hard copy for the remainder of the time that I was in the mayor's office. And then I took it with me when I moved to City Futures and just kept it in a folder in my drawer.
Um, the. Direction that, um, or the request that you let Shane have a look at it, he's meeting with Farooq tomorrow. Do you know what that was about? What the meeting with Mister, and sorry, Farooq's Mister Portelli?
I think it was a budget meeting.
Um, could document I N Q dot zero two one. Dot zero zero one dot zero 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 three be brought up, but please don't live stream it. I'm good.
Have I made an order about this document?
I don't know that you have, Commissioner, an application has been made or a communication has been made between. About requesting an order in relation to this document, I don't know that an order has been made yet.
I don't, oh, excuse me. No, hasn't been made yet, that's why I asked for it not to be live streamed, but.
Should I do it now?
Yes, that would be good, thank you.
All right, the uh, pursuant to uh, Mister Emmett, um, is the usual form of order appropriate?
Yes.
The document with the document identifier, I N Q dot zero two one. Dot zero zero one dot zero 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 three. Pursuant to section twelve B, the Royal Commissions Act, I direct that document not be published other than in accordance with the terms of the usual order.
Uh, Ms. Meyer, looking at the first page of the document, and we can scroll through it if it assists you. But you can see, um, it it start, it it's got a number of columns with. Oh, gosh, position description, revised budget, oh, thank you, budget F T E, new position. Next year budget, et cetera.
Yes.
And you can see at the beginning, there's a heading, city presentation, city presentation office. And then, for example, there will be what appears to be, I would suggest, a position number, maybe?
Yes.
A position description.
Yes.
Um, and then if you follow along that row, information about their salary.
Yes.
Um, I can take you, we can scroll through the whole document if it would assist you. But just looking at that part of the first page. Um, does that appear to be the F T E detailed report that you obtained?
Yes.
For Mister Manoon?
Yes.
And I asked you, that can be taken down, I asked you some questions, um. Beforehand about within the council staff, whether Planner A could actually know what Planner B earns. Um, the same, um, provision about, in a sense, confidentiality. Did the, was it your understanding that also applied to members of the governing body?
Yes.
Um. Excuse me for a minute. Excuse me.
May I please have a break?
Of course you can, um, why don't we break until three P M, okay, ten minutes?
I'm having a, I can't find a document, I'd be.
No, that's all right, that's, um, Ms. Myers just asked for a break and that's perfectly fine, uh, we'll adjourn for ten minutes and I'll resume at three, thank you.
Ms. Myers, before the break, I had asked you some questions about. The mayor requesting and being provided with that F T E uh, detailed report?
Yes.
And I want to ask you about another time where. On social media, um, the mayor referred to salaries. At a more general level, but salaries received by council staff.
Yes.
Would document I N Q dot zero two three dot zero zero one dot zero zero one eight be brought up, please? And it can be live streamed. Uh. You can see from this page, it's on the Liverpool City Council, I think, Facebook page. Um, and it's something about, um, the mayor. Out on site, turning the first sod for a new playground.
Yes.
Would. Would you turn to page two? I think that this is how it it works, down the bottom, there's a message. Excuse me for a minute. Um. My understanding. Is that, um, it started with, um. The posting about the new playground.
Yes.
There seems to have then been some kind of comment or response. And then we have, um, Ned Manoon, Mayor of Liverpool. Diana Halo, I get paid a hundred and twenty seven thousand per year. The C E O who employs and runs the organisation gets paid five hundred and fifty. Directors, three hundred and eighty. Managers get between two hundred thousand and three hundred thousand. And some assistants, a hundred and fifty thousand.
Yes.
Um, and. The reference is, um. A- and then down the bottom, there's, he further says, having said all that, I think the C E O has to. Lift his game, make the city look better, and the new acting C E O is doing that, albeit not as, and then. The message is cut out. Um, the reference to the assistants getting a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. To your knowledge, um, was that a reference to a particular person within the council?
Yes.
Um, and to your knowledge, did that, uh, the. The amount that that particular person was receiving wasn't generally known?
Yes.
And, um, you had a conversation with that person about it?
Yes.
About this posting, and was that particular person upset about it?
Yes.
What's the date of this? Or at least the original post to which these replies or comments have been posted?
I think we might have to look into that unless Ms. Myers could.
That's all right.
Assist us. I.
From memory, it was.
Sorry?
In twenty twenty four, I couldn't indicate the month.
That's all right.
If I say about eleven July twenty twenty four?
I'm unsure, I'm probably certain.
But you think it was sometime in twenty twenty four?
Yes.
Excuse me. Uh. We can do a screenshot of this, but it was nine, that, sorry, the original one? The original one was nine July twenty twenty four.
Thank you.
Um. Also, while we're on this subtopic of information obtained. Um, Liverpool City Council, at least a couple of times per year, would hold a citizenship ceremony?
Yes.
Uh, did you, when you were the executive assistant to the mayor, have a role in organising that?
Uh, only assisting the civic and citizenship coordinator identify suitable dates for ceremonies. Which would then be placed, uh, in the mayor and councillor's diaries. By the council, um, councillor support officer.
Uh, and was it your understanding that part of the procedure to participate, um, as a new citizen in the ceremony? Is that you had to attend council and in a sense, register your details? No, sorry, I'll start again, um, is it your understanding that to become a citizen, you you make an application to a federal department?
Yes.
And as part of that, is it your understanding that you provide identification details?
Yes.
Which could be like a passport number or some other identifying.
Yes.
Information. Um, moving now to the ceremony that's run by the council. Um, if you, um, want to be part of that ceremony. Again, is there a procedure where you've got to, in a sense, verify who you are with a council official?
Uh, it's almost the process, but not quite, so whoever is registered for a particular ceremony. Is determined by the federal department and they provide the list of conferees to council. And depending on the number of conferees on the list. You'll be able to tell how many can be accommodated in one ceremony. And then stagger them per ceremony date. Um, council had no say over the numbers. Some months you would have no applications or conferees come through and other months you could have hundreds.
Um, once council works out who's going to, um, be bestowed citizenship at a particular ceremony. Is there some kind of verification with the person who's going to become a citizen? With the information they've provided to the federal department?
Yes, on the morning of this or day of the ceremony, when they arrive, they're told to arrive at a specific time before the ceremony. To allow for registration of every conferee, where their I D details are checked against the list provided by. The Department of Immigration. And you, the people on the registration desk need to cite photo identification. And check their details match what's on the list from the department. And reconfirm their postal address for their certificate to be posted out to.
The information that's sent from the federal department, is it known?
As a P V L list.
P V L?
Yes.
And that checking, as you said, usually appear, um, sorry, takes place before the ceremony?
Yes.
Um, and at the end of the ceremony, what happens with the P V L list?
Uh, all of them are recollected by the civic and citizenship coordinator. And there is a clean copy that has to be signed at the end of the ceremony by the presiding officer.
And if the mayor is attending the ceremony, is he usually the presiding officer?
Yes, there's protocols around who can and can't be the presiding officer.
And once, um, the presiding officer signs off the P V L sheet, what happens to it?
Uh, the civic and citizenship coordinator returns it to the department. Uh, that happens so that they can then distribute the citizenship certificates. And address any people who may not have shown up, or their details, um, could be incorrect and they need a correction.
Um, and the P V L sheet. Um, is it or a copy of it, uh, to your knowledge, allowed to be retained by the council or anybody within the council?
Uh, the, it would be limited to the civic and citizenship coordinator. Because they're responsible for that area, but I would think it would be, they would be stored in a secure can. Container in content manager, um, because they contain people's private details.
And ultimately, to your knowledge, are they, are the details either returned to the department?
Uh, the signed list is returned.
Um, uh, you you spoke about. The list being kept in some kind of confined or confidential.
It could be, I'm only assuming there because it was not my role.
Um, did, was anybody else either within the council? Or the governing body supposedly to have any other access to that list? Other than the presiding officer signing it at the end of the ceremony?
No, not, uh, not that list. The mayor and councillors were entitled to have a list of the names and a postal address for any new conferees. Should they wish to write them a congratulatory letter after the ceremonies.
Okay, so that's restricted to name and postal address?
Yes.
All right, other details that were on the P, the P V L list. Were not supposed to be distributed or disseminated.
No.
The councillors or mayor?
No.
Um, at any time, um, did the mayor make a request for that? Um, additional information that was contained on the P V L?
Yes.
When was that?
He, I can't pinpoint the exact time, but definitely in the twenty twenty one term. At one, he had requested before, could I obtain the full list for him? With the contact details, meaning phone and. with the contact details, meaning phone and email for the conferees and I had reminded him that he was not permitted to have that information and declined. Um, at a certain point, he asked that I instruct the staff at citizenship not to present him with the hard copy form at the end of the ceremony and that he would prefer them to be brought to the office for him to sign there. And then expressed that his intent was for me to then scan the lists in so that a copy could be retained with the details.
And did you do that?
No.
Um, did you inform him that you were not going to do that?
Some occasions I would, other occasions I would just arrange with the civic and citizenship coordinator to come and retrieve the list after it was signed. I can't recall ever giving him one. It could have happened.
Um, but you do recall that at least on one occasion or maybe other occasions, that request was made by the mayor?
Yes.
Excuse me for a minute. Just a couple of other discreet topics, um, merril minutes.
Yes.
Uh, when you were the executive assistant, um, to the mayors, uh, was, there, there's obviously a procedure or part of a council meeting known as a merril minute?
Yes.
Uh. Did you have a role in the preparation of the merril minute?
Uh, yes.
Um, the merril minutes from, um, the records of council meetings before the inquiry, often they are, um, matters of congratulating a constituent who's got an award or won a prize. Um, and at times they can be, uh, a, a, a resolution, um, noting the passing of a, of a citizen and providing condolences to families.
Yes.
So you've kind of got those types of merril minutes. Did you have a role in preparing those?
Yes.
And what was your role?
Usually to either do a first draft for the mayor's consideration or if the mayor had written the minute themselves, they would have me format it, correct any, um, errors in the document and make sure it was in the correct format to provide to the executive services team.
Um, so with those types of merril minutes, um, let's assume it was, um, a constituent has won a prize or been given an award. Um, you may do the research drafted. Um, the mayor gives it the tick?
Yes, sometimes it would be other staff that would prepare
Okay.
The content if it wasn't something that I could easily, um, obtain.
And once it's been finalised, where does it go then?
It's, uh, emailed to the executive services team so that they're aware, it depends on the timing of when the minute is being provided. If it's before the cutoff for papers to be published in the business papers, um, it would be emailed across to them or assigned in content manager and it would go into the business paper. Uh, if it had missed the cutoff, it would be, still be provided to that team so that they had a copy to place on the screen during the meeting. And, uh, a copy, if there was sufficient time, would be provided to the CEO as a courtesy. Um, so they were aware of the minute and they could review it and determine if any legal advice or further information was required before it was moved on the floor. And if it was prepared very last minute, it would still be emailed to executive services for the screen in the meeting. But I would print hard copies and take them down to the chambers to place on the councillors' desks and some of the executives so that they would be aware that it was going to be moved.
Um, just concentrating on the merril minute that is created after the cutoff for the preparation of the business papers stroke agenda items. Um, you, you've given the example there where it, it's after the cutoff, but there seems to be time for it to be provided to the CEO for a copy to be put up on the screen, et cetera, and also for a copy to be given to other councillors so they know what's
Yes.
Um, were there instances when you were the executive assistant, um, to Mayor Manoun where there was a merril minute which wasn't one of those, um, ceremonial ones that was a, a merril minute of more substance that was created at the last moment?
Yes.
Um, your recollection, did that happen often?
Uh. Yes, it may not be that the minute was one of greatest substance though. It would depend meeting to meeting. But a lot of, more often than not, they were prepared in a rush at the last minute.
And if they're prepared in a rush at the last moment, um, can you give us an example of one that was prepared in a rush at the last moment? Um, and when you say at the last moment, say, for example, the council meeting was starting at two P M. When would, I take it you're involved because either the mayor has drafted something or says to you, want this as a merril minute? And you've got to start drafting something for him to review?
Yes.
Um, can you recall an example where something like that was prepared in a rush?
The, um, merril minute proposing to terminate Dr Jackson's employment as CEO was not, uh, given enough time and attention. And I was still typing the document while the council meeting was in progress.
Uh. Um. So this was a merril minute that was going to recommend the termination of employment of Dr Jackson?
Yes.
Um, do you recall? Um, were you provided with a draft by the mayor?
I can't recall. I know that he had several discussions with councils, general council. And they had obtained advice through, I believe, L G New South Wales or local government, New South Wales, the membership body. Um, at one point in the meeting, they called a recess and the general council came upstairs um, to help me finish the minute and we were both quite distressed, um, in trying to do so. Um, more so from my perspective that it was not going to adequately address all the things that it should or there may be legal things that should be in there that it just felt rushed and it was a lot of pressure to prepare it like that.
Um, so you were actually typing it?
Yes.
Um, and you had the general council come up kind of looking over your shoulder and looking at the content of it?
Yes.
Um, the procedures that you outlined, um, with a merril minute that the CEO would get a copy as a courtesy matter, the other councillors may get a copy. I assume in respect of this merril minute, none of those niceties were observed?
No, um, it would have, it was minute prepared to be moved in a confidential session because it involved a member of staff. Uh, the minute was different to other minutes because, uh, I applied a watermark to it and each copy was numbered to ensure that none of the councillors could keep them or reproduce them. And at the end of the meeting, they were all retrieved back.
And when you say at the end of the meeting, was that at the end of the closed session?
Yes.
Um. Excuse me. Uh, would you bring up please L C C dot zero zero two dot zero zero seven dot zero zero one six? Just hold on for a sec, thanks. This is probably a big ask, this is, um, Ms Myers. The, the document that's come up, um, this is the document we have, which appears to be sorry, could you just move it up a bit? No, I, I don't think that's the right one. Sorry. We'll just leave. Forget that, take that down, thanks. Um. Um, the, the merril minutes being prepared at the last moment in particular where they're a matter of either substance or complexity, did that place you under pressure?
Yes.
Um, and to your observation, depending on what the topic was, did it place other staff members?
Yes.
Um. Did you ever have a discussion with Mr Manoun about why are you preparing this so late?
Always.
Um.
Sometimes he would send the topics weeks in advance. But if I ever tried to ask on the progress and if he had drafts or if he could meet with me.
Um, do you want to take a quick break?
No.
All right? Um. I want to ask you about another incident and the reason why I'm asking you about it is primarily, um, the effect on you and also your observed observations about effect on other staff. Um, do you recall that there was an announcement in twenty twenty three? It was the announcement by the mayor and his wife who was, um, uh, standing for election, it was on about the seventeenth of March twenty twenty three. And it was an announcement about the funding of a pool at Hammerville.
Yes.
You recall that?
Yes.
Um, at that, before the announcement was made, did you know it was going to be announced?
No.
To your knowledge, did anybody within council, and when I say council, I'm talking about the staff, know that it was going to be announced?
Not that I was aware of.
Um. When it was announced, um, were, you were the executive assistant to the mayor, you were in that position at that time, March twenty three?
Yes.
Uh, as the executive assistant, were you contacted by press or members of the staff or other people about it?
On, I can't recall if it was on the morning of the announcement, but certainly the, the following work week. Um, I was fielding questions from other staff on why didn't I tell anyone? Why didn't I alert the comms manager or the CEO that this was happening? People were assuming that I had known about it and chosen to withhold the information.
Um, so did that place you under stress?
Yes.
Um, and also, um, if there are assertions that, you know, why didn't you tell other people within the staff, potentially unpleasant for you?
Yes.
Would you just excuse me for a minute? Well, I think I'm down to two last topics, so nearly there. Uh, you excuse me for a minute. You gave some evidence earlier where it was in the context of the email, um, sorry, the text message after Mr Manoun had sent to Mr Ojaka the email about can you do, um, modelling and recommendations for the four aspects dealing with the budget?
Yes.
And do you remember that there was a text, um, exchange between you and Mr Manoun where he's, um, he said something like, what's the tone like and you answered, perfect?
Uh, I know the exchange, but that was probably not correct.
There's some evidence that at times, the mayor's, um, emails that he was sending people um, were either rude or could be interpreted as bullying or in your view, not in an, in an appropriate expression or tone?
Yes.
Um. Also, when you were the, um, executive assistant and then in the, um, business leader position with two to um, the director of City Futures, um, at times, did you, or did Mr Mallard either raise with you or make comments about um, email exchanges that he had with the mayor?
Uh, yes, more so text message conversations.
Um, and in those, did, um, Mr Mallard raise that um, at times he found certain um, text messages to either be abusive or rude?
Yes.
Sorry, if you can just excuse me for a minute. All right, could we bring up I N Q dot zero five zero dot zero zero one dot zero zero two zero? This one, yes. Yep. Uh, now this is the twenty fourth of February twenty twenty four. Is it a message from um, Mr Mallard to you?
Yes.
Where he says, morning, thinking if I take that corner meeting room and put property into my prison office once we are settled. Then Ned has gone off the rails on CEO and me this morning, insulting and demanding messages, I'm nearly over it.
Yes.
Uh, and then you respond, what is he going off about this time? I think a lot of people are nearly over it, it's awful. And if we would go to the second page. Um, this is Mr Mallard again, both of you treat me like, um, shit, my role isn't important. Um, your attitudes are perme- permeating through the organisation, I don't like it. And from what appears underneath, uh, did you take that to be some kind of text message? Or something received by Mr Mallard and the CEO from the mayor?
Yes, he had copied it and pasted it from his text chain with the mayor.
Right, um. And then you respond with um, bit rich coming from him after being consistently absent, et cetera?
Yes.
Are you okay?
Yep.
Uh, and then he's, Mr Mallard continues, there's a lot more, I'm calling his bluff, et cetera, I'm not here to be degraded and insulted considering how hard I'm working, John is a bit upset too.
Yes.
Do you recall what prompted the um, the text messages from the mayor? And what this was all about?
Um, from memory, it may have been to do with the budget.
Right. Um.
But it could have been another matter.
When you commented, that's a bit rich coming from him after being consistently absent, what were you referring to there?
Um. That he um, was not present in the office for long periods of time because he had personal matters to attend to outside of council. Um, it was widely known through council that the mayor was not good with time management. And a lot of times he would either not turn up for things or be extremely late, um. It was a constant problem in both terms that he was mayor.
Um, I want to send, um, now show you another text message from Mr Mallard. But I would ask for this not to be put up on the live stream. Um, I N Q dot zero five zero dot zero zero one dot zero zero two one. Uh, you, oh, sorry, can you just move that up a wee bit? Um, you can see that's from Mr Mallard on the twenty fifth of February at nine P M.
Yes.
Um, he says, hi, I'm off work tomorrow. Then some other things.
Yes.
Um, approved by CEO after text abuse by mayor?
Yes.
No problem sharing, that is why I'm not in office.
Yes.
Um, and then, uh, no meetings with mayor unless I approve.
Yes.
And then if we can go to the next page. And you see, when, when's council be interested in what he does? Told John he's moving comms to report to him. Comms is that communication?
Yes.
Uh, and then you've got, hit the head on the nail there. However, I've seen him do this to previous directors. And his response to me when I said you can't speak to people like that was along the lines of they shouldn't be in those roles then if they can't hack it. So there is some level of awareness.
Yes.
Um, again, do you, do you know what prompted Mr Mallard, um, to send that email to you, what the particular issue was?
And the mayor wanted the communications team to move out from under Shane as director of City Futures to be re um, directed to report directly to the CEO. The mayor and I had had a verbal discussion about this. And it was the same day that I mentioned earlier when I asked him what he was doing with John. Because it had become apparent their relationship had broken down. And this was the, the same issue why I went to see him. He appeared that he was grouping Shane in with his displeasure towards the CEO. And we had a discussion about that. Um, he felt Mr Ojaka was too disconnected from the staff body. And he felt moving this team underneath him as CEO would force him to have more interaction internally, um, through the lower levels of staff.
Just on that, um, was it your observation that Mr Ojaka didn't have interaction with kind of lower levels of staff? I know you only were there for a couple of weeks.
Um, this was when we were at Moore Street, uh, John was often so heavily scheduled in his diary. There often wasn't a lot of time for him to informally move through the floors or walk the floor, as people like to refer to it, to interact with the staff. It was difficult at the beginning of his tenure because he had inherited the restructure process, um, which had not been going well, so that did take um, a lot of his focus and time. And then, given his uh, public profile, uh, he was probably a CEO that was in higher demand to some other former CEOs because of his, um, he was a higher profile CEO because of his parliamentary career. So stakeholders were very keen to meet with him as the new CEO of Liverpool City Council. So his diary was quite heavily booked.
I'm just pausing there. Uh, Commissioner, uh, this hasn't been, the message hasn't been livestreamed. You'll note some comments, I think, in the original message and that was why I was hesitant in it being livestreamed.
That ties into the passage of evidence that was taken the other day in private.
Yes.
Um.
Our application would be a non-publication order over it.
All right. In relation to document I N Q dot zero five zero dot zero zero one dot zero zero two one. Assumption to section twelve B of the Royal Commissions Act, I direct that document not be published otherwise than in accordance with terms of the usual.
Excuse me for a minute. I'm sorry, Commissioner, could I just make an inquiry in a sense through you?
I didn't mind you whispering across if you, if that is more convenient and efficient.
Um, I just have one quick topic.
Yeah.
Which won't take very long.
Yes.
Not wanting to um, restrict Maluna's friend, but she's given a rough indication of about twenty minutes, is that okay? Um, I understand and I'll speak to my friend if it's okay. At the moment, she's got about twenty minutes cross-examination, but there are a couple of matters where she's still waiting for instructions. Um, I was looking at whether we could finish this afternoon, but in there's a possibility the instructions might come through. Um, I, I suppose.
Look, I am, as I think would be clear by now that we're three and a half weeks in, entirely open to practical and efficient suggestions, so if there's a prospect of finishing Ms Myers this afternoon, so she doesn't have to come back, that would be good, but I perfectly understand if there's a need to take instructions overnight as well, so I'm open to whatever the parties think is the best way forward.
All right, um, may I inquire through your commissioner, um, if it would appear that we may be here for twenty minutes and it may finish then?
Yes.
Um, may I inquire whether Ms Myers would want that or would she prefer to come back for a short period sometime tomorrow?
Do you want, why don't I do this? Why don't I just break? Have you finished?
There's just one small topic.
All right, why don't you finish that small topic, then I'll take two minutes so that Ms Myers doesn't feel pressured to answer a question in the witness box with everybody sitting here and then she can let us know. I can be let know whether there's a preference to continue or not, and if that can happen, that can happen, and if not, and if Ms Richardson let me know if she needs time overnight, we can take a different course.
Um. I think I've actually got two tiny topics, the, the question of the confidentiality with the merril minute for the termination of Mr, of Dr Jackson?
Yes.
Uh, could we bring up L C C dot zero zero two dot zero zero seven dot zero zero seven two? Yes. Uh, that you can see is the merril minute, personnel matter, second of February. And it concerns the termination of um, Dr Jackson's contract.
Yes.
And can you see, if we move a little bit further, yeah, there's that watermark of confidential?
Yes.
Is that what you were referring to when you were preparing it?
Yes.
Um, and then in addition, you said that, um, individual copies would be provided to the councillors in a closed, closed session. But at the end of the closed session, you would make sure that you got back from each councillor a copy of this.
Yes, in addition to the watermark, I had hand-numbered them.
Um. Excuse me. Uh, I don't have a second call.
All right, what else? I'm, I'd like that two minutes, Ms Myers. Um, shouldn't feel pressured one way or the other as whether you would better have finished now or back tomorrow. Have a discussion with the council, that can be communicated.
Okay.
I don't want you to do that.
Thank you.
Um, all right, I'll just take two minutes, I'm sorry.
I, I am ready to stop, but it's obviously up to Ms Myers whether she should.
I'm grateful.
I'm ready.
Thank you for that indication. So, um, we can finish you this afternoon if you like, or if you'd prefer it, you should come back tomorrow, you just let me know. I'll take two minutes, I'm just going to stand outside the door and someone can give me an order.
Thank you, Ms Myers, my name's Ms Richardson, I'm acting on behalf of Mayor Manoon. Um, so, Ms McDonald asked you some questions today about, um, the um, an email that Mayor Manoon sent through to CEO John Ojaka with four points about um, modelling and recommendations, it was on about the twelfth of April last year, sort of few weeks before the, the council meeting in April, just before that.
Yes.
Um, if we could just bring up the text message, please, N M A dot zero one one dot zero zero one dot zero 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 one. I'll just give you a recap of what was in the email, but you tell me if you would like to see a copy of it. Recall that he had, the mayor had sent through an email to um, Mr Ojaka and Faruk Patelli and the deputy mayor with four points on it in relation to.
Yes.
That one was about a, a reduc- a reduction in management costs by um, modelling whether that could be achieved by lessening the amount of directors and managers. Two was a million dollar reduction in wages by removing non-core function positions. Three, annual comparison of legal expenses. And four was about um, income projected from leasing, remember, we call it that.
Yes.
Point email, does that make sense?
Yes.
And then if we look at the um, the text there, I think you've already agreed with Ms McDonald, that the texts we see there are in relation to that email that you said to Mr, the mayor, that the tone and pitch of that email was perfect?
Yes.
And you meant that when you said it?
Yes, it was.
You weren't being sarcastic, you, it was genuine feedback.
Yes.
Um, and then we see that Manoon, um, he will still, still lose it, he will hate this and so on. And the mayor refers to the budget at five million dollar deficit. You were aware, weren't you, that it was a key policy objective of the mayor to try and achieve a balanced up budget?
Yes.
And then you write, it is, um, when you said it is, were you responding to it is the right time for us to provide suggestions about the budget? Is that what you meant?
Yes.
Um, and then you wrote, he can lose it, but he still needs to address it.
Yes.
You asked ever so nicely, plus the points you raise are valid. Now, you gave evidence this morning to Ms McDonald that, um, when you say the points you raise are valid, you weren't being sarcastic. And that, that was your view at the time, is that correct?
Yes, I thought they were valid questions for a mayor to be asking a CEO.
So the four, I'll call it the four point email, that the mayor had asked the CEO to um, seek modelling and recommend. to seek modelling and recommendations about. Was it the case, given your experience over some years at Liverpool Council, you thought that they were valid points for the mayor to be raising as part of the budgetary process?
I thought the points were valid in the sense that, at that point, the mayor was just seeking information, and that's all he was asking for. It appeared that the word modelling, he was after different scenarios, or to assist with budget forecasting.
And you thought it was valid to seek modelling about that information?
If that was what he was after.
And... But you understood from the email that that was what he was after, and in your view, that was valid information for the mayor to be asking for?
Yes, I can't recall what my view would have been at the time. It may have just been saying that to the mayor to reassure him about his email.
You said at the time, the points you raise are valid. Do you think, given that you wrote that to the mayor, you meant it at the time?
Yes.
The case, is it that the mayor mentioned to you at various points in relation to Mr. Ajarka's management style, the mayor's view that he doesn't like to make hard decisions?
Yes.
And he likes to be popular with staff, and part of that is he doesn't want to make hard decisions, do you agree with that?
I don't recall him expressing about it being popular with the staff. I only recall two occasions when he said he doesn't want to make the hard decisions.
And what, did Mr. Manon explain what he meant by hard decisions?
He didn't go into great detail. He said he doesn't, the first occasion, he said he doesn't want to make the hard decisions around the budget. And the second time was at Civic Place in April, and he repeated the same phrasing, that he doesn't want to make the hard decisions.
Did you understand at the time, making the hard decisions was about the budget and cuts that might need to be made to the budget?
Yes.
And did you understand that part of the tension between the mayor and the CEO in this budgetary process, I think you've given evidence that it was happening in February and March, in terms of budgets being looked at?
Yes.
That there was tension between the mayor and the CEO, because the mayor had a view about seeking to achieve a balanced budget, and that some hard decisions might need to be made, and Mr. Ajarka did not want to make those decisions in the mayor's view. Agree with that?
Yes, and there were some other items that contributed to the tension between them, not just the budget issues.
But is one of the key things that was adding to the tension there, different views about the budgetary process?
Yes.
And the mayor had a very firm view that he was seeking a balanced budget, is that correct?
Yes.
So that what the mayor wanted to happen in relation to the budget was decisions being made such that a balanced budget was achieved?
Yes.
And in his view, that he expressed to you was that Mr. Ajarka wasn't wanting to do what the mayor wanted to do in terms of making sure the budget was balanced? Agree with that?
Yes.
You asked some messages about, sorry, you asked about some text messages that were sent on the nineteenth of April, so this is about three days after what we're calling the swearing meeting. According to Mr. Ajarka, that the mayor is disappointed you put no effort into apologising to him, or trying to talk to him after the incident the other day, do you recall that?
Yes.
Was it your understanding in the way the mayor had communicated to you that he was genuinely disappointed that Mr. Ajarka had not apologised to him?
Yes, and the mayor expressed that he didn't feel that Mr. Ajarka was remorseful for the incident.
And was it your understanding that that had genuinely upset the mayor, that the blow-up that had happened when Mr. Ajarka had sworn at him?
Yes.
And I think you also gave evidence today about a text message where you asked the mayor whether he would say to salvage, whether he would like to salvage the relationship, do you recall that?
Yes.
And that the mayor said back to you that, you know, he really, do you recall that?
Yes.
And did you take that based on your interaction with the mayor, that he genuinely meant that, that he wished to salvage the relationship that could happen?
I did, but there was a small part of me that felt he had already made his mind up of what course of action he would prefer to take.
So is that just based, your prediction of what you thought might be happening, as opposed to what someone said to you?
It was, I can't recall the sequence order, but the mayor and I had a verbal discussion. It was the same discussion that I gave evidence on, where I asked the mayor, would it make a difference if Mr. Ajarka apologised to him? And the mayor was silent and refused to answer the question. And then he also expressed in that discussion that he would want Mr. Ajarka to take a long period of leave to let him do what he needed to do with the budget.
What I want to suggest to you is that, what the mayor said to you is that the reference to leave was the mayor suggested to you that Mr. Ajarka needed to take some leave because he was exhibiting signs of stress, and that the swearing meeting where he, in effect, blew up and told him to shut the fuck up was an example?
No, that was not my understanding of his comment.
I want to suggest to you that it was in that context that the mayor said that Mr. Ajarka needs to take some leave, it was in relation to the stress that Mr. Ajarka was showing, do you agree with that?
No.
And that he said that he needs to take some leave, and when he gets back, the budget will be done, do you agree with that?
No.
I want to suggest to you, he didn't say he needs to take a nice long holiday and let me get on with what I want to do with the budget.
No, he said he needs to take a nice long holiday, so I can do what I need to do with the budget, and then everybody will be happy. And then I asked him if the holiday meant holiday until termination, or he could return afterwards, because it appeared for several months that the relationship was possibly not going to be repairable, even if they had a balanced budget.
Well, is it the case that you just wondered, isn't it the case, you just wondered in your mind as to whether or not it was a holiday or a termination? I thought the evidence you gave earlier was that you just, that was something you thought in your mind rather than verbalising.
It, could it be? Ned emphasised the long, the word long, while he was speaking. And he was what I would call very slightly smirking while he was saying it, so I did not feel that he was saying it out of concern for John's health.
My learned friend asked you some questions about, on the twenty-third or the twenty-fourth of April, this is prior to the council, the big council meeting last year?
Yes.
That Mr. Ajarka said to you words to the effect of, I'm racking my brain as to where the unions have got the one hundred and fifty number from?
Yes.
All that? Did you ever discuss with him in, on that day, like prior to the council meeting, why he didn't issue a communication to staff that the one hundred and fifty number was wrong?
Not that I can recall.
Ms. Myers, you gave some evidence about the comms team being moved so that they would report to the CEO?
Yes.
Are you aware that in that previous term, that the comms team had reported to the CEO?
Yes.
So there was nothing out of the usual about the fact that the comms team would be moved to report to the CEO, do you agree with that?
Yes, as long as it was done in the proper manner.
So what term was it where the comms team was reporting to the CEO?
I believe every other term that, since I had been employed at council. I'm sure in 2015, I can't be certain on 2015, but I thought they did report through to the CEO then. The mayor waller term, I'm sure they reported into the CEO. It would show on the structure diagrams.
Thank you.
But it wasn't unusual.
Wasn't unusual for the comms team to report to the CEO, is that correct?
No.
And so the fact that the comms team was reporting to the Director of City Futures was unusual, you agree with that?
Not unusual, it was just a different structure.
And you gave some evidence about information that was made available. Is it a PVL sheet or a PBL sheet?
V.
V for violent?
Yes.
Okay. You gave some evidence about information that would come into council's hands as a result of organising the citizenship ceremony?
Yes.
And... And it's the case, isn't it, that if the mayor was the presiding officer in respect of those ceremonies, that the presiding officer would have to sign off on the document that had the list of persons and their postal address?
Yes.
And so on that document, it was the name of the person who was a recipient, or did you call them a conferee?
Yes, it would be the full list of conferees for that specific ceremony.
That would be a name and their postal address, is that correct?
No, it would be their full set of personal information.
I thought you referred to, there was a version of the list which had the name and the postal address.
That would be produced afterwards, so it was almost, I suppose, not a redacted list, but just that information would be extracted and be provided to the mayor and councillors, should they wish to send a congratulatory letter.
And... So is it your evidence that the version that the presiding officer would sign, was required to resign, that the version that the presiding officer was required to sign had name, postal address and other information?
I believe so, yes.
Do you recall one way or the other?
My understanding, it was the full list with all details. So their date of birth, phone number, email, whether they were male or female, their full name.
The version that the presiding officer signed?
Yes.
Can you remember one way or the other about that?
My memory is that it was the full list.
And I want to suggest to you that the mayor asked you to scan a copy of documents that he signed, so you had a record of what documents he'd...
My recollection is that he wanted to keep the data on the list. He had made frequent requests in the past about how he could obtain the full lists of data.
Well, I want to suggest to you that what the mayor said to you is that he wanted you to scan the documents he was asked to sign, so that he could have a record of the documents that he signed, do you accept that?
It's possible that he could have.
And that he did not ask you to scan copies of any document that had broader information, including phone numbers, do you agree with that?
No, he definitely asked me that.
Those are my questions, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Is there any other party? Ms. Brig, Ms. Brigden, any questions from you?
No.
Thank you.
I'm just...
One?
Very quick. You asked some questions leading up to April 2024 about the relationship between the CEO and Mayor Manon.
Yes.
And one, I think on two occasions you answered, something along the lines of other items or other matters were adding to the tension between the CEO and the mayor.
Yes.
So other items in addition to the budget?
Yes.
What were those other items or matters?
Mr. Ajarka became frequently frustrated, well, more frustrated over his tenure, that when the mayor would have a, more so a complaint email from a constituent or a stakeholder, that he wouldn't just contact John as the CEO, and that he would sometimes send emails that would be copied to John, several directors, possibly a few managers, and John referred to it as a scattergun approach. And what would happen is it would... And what would happen is it would sometimes come overnight from the mayor. Whoever saw it first would start working on it, not realising everyone else who was copied in was doing the same thing. And that caused a lot of frustration for John. And he had expressed that he had asked the mayor to stop doing that. John asked me on more, one, more than one occasion, why did the mayor do that? And, um, the he didn't appreciate that style of communication. And so from John's perspective, that was frustrating him. The mayor continued, uh, for a short period, I think he did just go straight through John as the CEO. But on occasion, it would, it happened again of what John would describe as a scattergun approach. Uh, the mayor expressed to me in a verbal conversation that he felt John, um, did not pay enough attention to him as mayor and that he's, he felt John did not feel his role as mayor was important. And that he felt John gave more time to the local MPs and the USU than he did to him as mayor. And that seemed to call, let be a point of tension from the mayor's perspective that he felt John's not treating their professional relationship with the respect that it deserved.
Um, you were taken to some of those text messages between you, um, and the mayor, uh, which raised, where the mayor raised, there didn't seem to be any effort in an apology coming.
Yes.
And, um, my learned friend said to you, asked you a question along the lines of, so it appeared that the mayor was genuinely upset at the incident.
Yes.
Remember that?
Yes.
Um, yesterday, uh, you gave evidence about being forward, forwarded by the mayor and indeed being shown by the mayor in the presence of the deputy mayor, um, a Facebook, um, video, do you remember that?
Yes.
Um, which, um, was relatively quick, but it had as a theme, shut the F up.
Mm-hmm.
Um, when that was shown to you, and I think your evidence was, it was on the 17th of April, so the day after the, um, swearing meeting.
Yes.
Um, did you form a view at that point whether the mayor was genuinely upset at the incident?
I object. I object to it. What is the relevance of this in terms of thinking about, uh, what was in the mayor's head when he sent her a video? I mean, the question can be put to the mayor about why that video was sent. But I, I do object to this in circumstances where the witness has given evidence that she felt a view that it was, um, that he felt genuinely upset. And now we have, uh, reexamination on a topic that I did not go to in terms of this video, um, about what was in someone, or how did she feel about what was in someone else's head? It, it, it's so tangentially irrelevant and in my submission, it's prejudicial.
Well, it's in a substance, asking the same question that my friend put. Was your perception after those, uh, that, that mayor was genuinely upset at the incident? It's asking the same question but referring to the particular video that was shown and forwarded to her.
I, I I think there's force in that, but ultimately, how does it help me either way? In addressing my terms of reference.
Um.
Whether Ms Myers thought it was genuine or had a different view, it might have changed from time to time based on information she had.
Uh.
What do I, what do I do with that ultimately?
Well, I suppose it's the use or the relevance of the, the opinion that she expressed in a question to my friend, if they're both tainted by that.
As I say, I think there's force in that and submissions can be made about that ultimately, but um, as I sit here now, I'm not sure that it, it, it ultimately helps me too much, if I can put it that way.
They were the questions.
All right, thank you. Um, Ms Myers, that completes your evidence. Um, I'm very grateful for your attendance over yesterday and a very long day today. Um, and you're free to go.
Thank you.
Uh.
What's the?
No, I hate to say this, Ms Myers, isn't excused.
No, no witnesses being rightly excused, but once that can happen, that can be communicated to Ms Myers and that is you are representing her.
Um, tomorrow we have Mr Ajarka.
Right.
Uh, could you excuse me? For 10 o'clock.
All right, is there anything else to do this afternoon? All right, and I'm grateful for everybody sitting late to finish Ms Myers this afternoon. Uh, and I'll adjourn until 10am, thank you.